I call the 3:00 PM session of the July 25th, 2023, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you that if you want to address the board specifically, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item, Matters Presented by the Public, that will take up as Agenda Item Number 21 at tonight's meeting. Again, welcome everyone. I thank you for coming out and participating in your county government and braving what was a brief outburst of weather in the area with both rain, hail, a little bit of everything this afternoon, but thank you for being here. Our first business item of consideration is Agenda Item Number Five, the Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the items of consent written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six with six-zero, Jennifer. I do not see Mr. Torneke.
Easy. Okay, all right. You slipped in, Leon. Mr. Zare, I believe that you have a resolution for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution of the Henry County Board of Supervisors. Whereas many residents of Henry County work tirelessly to make their community a better place and dedicate their talents to a career in public service. And whereas public service must be more than doing a job efficiently and honestly, it must be a complete dedication to the people and to the community at large. And whereas Leon Torneke has demonstrated that complete dedication to his community and will be retiring as the city manager of Martinsville on July 31st, 2023, after 41 years of service. And whereas Mr. Torneke has been a consummate professional, leading with humility, integrity, courage, and a willingness to collaborate for the betterment of our region. And whereas examples of this collaboration can be seen through the city's ongoing commitment to our joint funding of agencies such as the Henry-Martinsville Department of Social Services, the Martinsville Henry County 911 Center, the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation, Piedmont Community Services, and the Blue Ridge Regional Library. And whereas, under the leadership of Mr. Torneke, our two localities have partnered on numerous projects to benefit our residents, ranging from the development of Commonwealth Crossing Business Center to recreational amenities such as the Dick and Willie Trail or the Smith River Sports Complex. And whereas the residents of Henry County have a reputation for being hardworking, and after 41 years of service, Mr. Torneke certainly lives up to that reputation and has earned a much deserved retirement. Now therefore be it resolved on this 25th day of July, 2023, that the Henry County Board of Supervisors expresses its sincere appreciation to Leon Torneke for his exemplary service to our community and congratulates him on his well-earned retirement. Signed, Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve this resolution. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's six-zero, Jennifer. Mr. Wagner, before I ask the board and Mr. Torneke to come forward, do you have additional comments?
Just, I had the opportunity to work with Leon closely over the past year as in a similar role in the county, but he has been a mentor and much expertise and reassuring guidance over the last year as we've navigated some cooperative programs. It has certainly been a pleasure to work with him over the many years. I certainly appreciate the friendship and the camaraderie.
Board members, if you will join me down front. Mr. Torneke and Mr. Wagner, will you join us as well?
I'll have to think of candidates to present them to you. Thank you so much for the job well done. Thank you for your friendship to the area. Thank you for continuing to work. And I know that you won't be going, whereas you'll still be a part of the community. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. This is indeed quite an honor. Dale mentioned that the county planned to do this. I was a little surprised given her events of late, but nonetheless, this is very special. It's quite an honor. Thank you. Somebody told me that as you retire, you kind of wind down, you know, your last couple of days and weeks. That's not happened. I just can't. Must not be doing something right. I kind of relate this to running a 5K or you can relate to this. You're kind of around the finish line. As you round your corner, you see the finish line ahead of you. You kind of pour it on the last couple of hundred yards trying to really improve your time. And I think the last month, I've just, it's been crazy just trying to finish up a lot of stuff. This again is a great honor. I've been with the city 41-plus years, and during that time, I've had just an absolutely great working relationship with the county. Worked great with Dale, with Tim, and then going back to Benny and even prior county administrators. We worked day in and day out with county staff on a great, excellent basis. Tim Pace, Darrell Jones. Where I worked with Mike Amos for decades on Clean Community and the landfill and just all kinds of stuff. And it's always been, you know, professional, friendly, productive, but it's just a kind of relationship that I think probably a lot of people around the state would be interested in. So there's an awful lot that goes on behind the scenes that I don't think the board is aware of, and I know the city council's not aware of. Thanks to people like Dale and staff that the county has, it really makes it easy. I've always thought that our relationship was the kind of relationship that if the city had an emergency or if the county had an emergency, all we got to do is pick up the phone and tell each other, and it's going to be what do you need and where you need it. And that's going to be the end of it. Thank you. Thank all of you for this. It's a great honor. It's kind of a real pleasure working with you. The community's got a lot going forward. We've done a lot together, but there's a lot more to be done. So, thank you.
Mrs. Buchanan, I believe that you also have a resolution for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution honoring Hilda Mayberry. Whereas the Henry County Board of Supervisors believes that upholding the rule of law is essential to maintaining the dignified quality of life that all citizens expect and deserve. Whereas those citizens who devote themselves to public service in the legal system make a more significant impact on the communities than they could ever know. And whereas one such citizen, Hilda Mayberry, has served in the Henry County Commonwealth Attorney's Office for more than 30 years and will retire on July 31st, 2023. Whereas Mrs. Mayberry has played a vital role in the operations of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office by preparing and processing legal records, scheduling court cases, and assisting attorneys with indictments, subpoenas, and notices. And whereas during her tenure, Mrs. Mayberry has been a source of institutional knowledge for her peers through her teaching on extradition and detainers at statewide training programs and through her expertise on records retention, which drew the attention of the Library of Virginia. And whereas this lifetime of service to her community constitutes an unwavering commitment to ensuring the safety of our citizens and embodies a passion for maintaining the necessary balance in our local judicial system. And whereas Mrs. Mayberry has served the citizens and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office with grace, dignity, and professionalism through her career. Now therefore be it resolved on this 25th day of July, 2023, that the Henry County Board of Supervisors recognizes Hilda Mayberry for her exemplary service to the people of Henry County and congratulates her on her well-earned retirement. And this is signed, Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's six-zero, Jennifer. Board members, likewise, if you'll join me down front. And Mr. Buchanan, if you would present this on behalf of the board. I'll also ask Commonwealth Attorney Andrew Nester, if he will join us up front.
I'll have the board supervisors who will present you this resolution. Thank you for your continued support for this meeting and your unwavering dedication to citizens of Henry County. Thank you.
Now, will Andrew be briefed in this conference?
This is brief, Mr. Torneke.
Wow, 30 years, 30-plus years. I think I'm asking, I've got a picture of my family in Martinsville with her family friend. I think my math is correct. I believe I was 12 years old when I was all that. Trying to navigate middle school, being called by a former county administrator, him law at that time. 30 years is a long time. And running Joe in our office is all we had. We welcomed the man in charge, but you should probably talk to a woman who knows the story long. And that's true of you. As the resolution says, she devoted a lifetime of service. She spent a couple of years in the county's school system before. Coming to us and my predecessor, Bob Osh, always had high grades. And he absolutely did that. He had a high grade, he highlighted that because of serving to our office. When I was coming along, I started to go to work. My mother told me, she said, "Take care of your administrative staff." She said, "They will take care of you because they look good." Phil Mayberry has done that every day of her career. She's come to work sometimes early, many, many, many times, staying up. And there was never a day that she left something undone. Never a day she acted unprofessional. There was never a day that she did not complete her job with the highest degree of professionalism, integrity, and perfection. I'm going to miss her greatly, everybody should feel. So joining me to congratulate her for her complete three decades of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nestor, and our best wishes to you, Ms. Mayberry. Agenda Item Number Eight, we have with us Greg Preston from the Piedmont Community Services. He's going to give us an update on some things going on there. If you arrived on this side of the building, you saw a mobile unit. And, welcome, Greg.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, board, Mr. Wagner. Exciting time for Piedmont Community Services. Over 18 months ago, we received the news that we would be the second community services board in the state of Virginia to receive funding to build a mobile unit that will be utilized for recovery services. So we are just enthusiastic at Piedmont. We are excited to have the opportunity to partner with some of our local agencies as well to join us as we move through Henry County, Patrick County, Martinsville, and Henry County, and Franklin County, I apologize. I have with me today Ms. Sharon Buckman. She's the Director of Clinical Services. Ms. Monica Flora, who's the Assistant Clinical Director of Arts. And Ms. Kippe Castle, who's the Director of Operations. And as, when I arrived, I thought about Kippe. I said, "He's the Director of Operations." But at the end of all of our job descriptions, there's this thing called "other." So he's also one of the drivers of our mobile unit. So we're just excited. I'm going to yield to Sharon Buckman, who will properly introduce Ms. Monica Flora. Thanks.
Good afternoon. First of all, I wanted to express thanks to this board for the support that you have provided to Piedmont Community Services over the decades in enabling us to provide behavioral health and developmental services to people in our community. Piedmont has a long tradition of providing services to people who are struggling with substance use disorders. We were doing this before we were Piedmont Community Services as the Patrick Henry Drug and Alcohol Council. And then there was a merger between those two organizations, and we have just continued to grow when a lot of our counterparts across the state were not providing the same amount of services to people with substance use disorders. Unfortunately, the demand for our services has continued to grow. The good news is that with the increase in the problems and with the opioid epidemic, we have a lot more information now about what works to help people who are struggling with substance use disorder. And one of the things that we know is that we need to break down barriers. We need to find ways to get services to people at the moment when they are ready for those services. Monica Flora is someone who's been at Piedmont for 14 years now and in positions of increasing responsibility and has been instrumental in helping us to develop new programs to try to break down those barriers. Most recently, with some of the state opioid response funding that we received, she's helped us to develop a program in partnership with our local emergency department. So when they are treating someone with a substance use disorder, they can call our peer warm line. Someone with lived experience, verified recovery, specialized training is able to talk with that person and help them to navigate into care, either with Piedmont or with one of the other providers in our community. Because of what we were able to do in developing that emergency department program, the department said, "We would like to see you all develop a mobile unit." And this has been under the direction of Ms. Flora from the beginning in terms of the planning, and I'm really proud to introduce her to you all and have her come and tell you about the next way that we are going to make it easier for people to come into services that they need. I have handouts. I will give them to Mr. Lyle and ask him to pass along one to each of you. And Monica Flora.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. It has truly been a pleasure to meet you all. As we were driving here, and the rain started coming down and the hail, and it was storming, Sharon and I were joking that this is the maiden voyage. This is the first time we have taken out our mobile unit, and since Kippe can get it here safely, which is sort of funny to me in a way because I think about the struggles of, you know, the rain, and we're trying to figure out how are we going to get in there? How do we ensure that you all see it safely? And how do we present it to you so you can see what an idea was in 2021 that now is going to help people? And the funny part for me, and more like irony, is thinking about what our individuals have to go through to get in to see us. And thinking about the rain and the struggles and financially, thinking about the support that maybe they have or don't have as they're trying to come in. As Sharon mentioned, we started this in 2021, and it is now coming to fruition. We are able to launch the unit. Our start date is September 18th of this year. Our hope and our primary mission of this unit is that we will reduce barriers for individuals that financially or physically can't come in. Our catchment area does serve Franklin County, Martinsville, Henry County, and Patrick. We know that individuals are driving 20-plus miles to come in and see us. We know that we have one of the largest and most rural catchment areas of the CSPs in the state. And we're also learning as we go. So you all asked me a couple of questions earlier about how will we market this? How will people know where to come? And the first thing that we're going to do is we're going to try and take care of the individuals that are already trying to come. So we serve annually 1,700 people with a substance use disorder. That is very small though compared to the amount of individuals we know that are using substances and that have determined that it's a problem in their life. So we want to go out into the rural areas to capture, to make sure that those 1,700 people are successful. And then, as we are self-sufficient, as we are increasing our prescriber capacity, we would like to be able to open the doors of the mobile unit so that individuals can come in and be seen on a walk-in basis. With that being said, if an individual comes to us on a walk-in basis, one of the most powerful things that we have in our toolbox is a peer recovery specialist. And as Sharon mentioned earlier, a peer recovery specialist is someone with lived experience. And they will meet with individuals even if they didn't have a scheduled appointment that day. Then we will be able to help them to get an assessment, to come to our recovery center here, and we will be able to help connect them with case management and therapy. On the unit specifically, we will have a traveling team that will consist of a nurse practitioner, a registered nurse, or an LPN. We will have a therapist, a case manager, a peer recovery specialist. And we also have an engagement specialist that provides a multitude of different duties, including helping individuals to get to pharmacies. So we know that with addiction, especially withdrawal from stimulant use and opiate use, that there's a very small window from the time that someone asks for help or is told that they need to get help or they're withdrawing, maybe they recently experienced an overdose, to actually get them to engage in also the medication that may be required. And that small window can be between one to eight hours. And so far, we have successfully referred folks from SOVA that walk into our clinics. We almost always, I would say 98%, get them into the services and medication they need within that eight hours. The hope is that this mobile unit will then increase the gap of the people that we are seeing initially to continued services. Because we want, the longer they stay in treatment, the more successful they would be. The unit is custom-built. I was excited to show that to you all. We tried to think of what would feel good for the individuals that live here. We didn't want it to look like a stereotypical waiting room. We wanted something that felt good for individuals when they walked on. If you did not get a chance to see the unit, let me know. I'd love to give you a tour of it. We hope that our numbers will increase. We've seen 232 individuals in our office-based addiction treatment programs, and we're hoping that those will at least double in the next year. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
Yes, Agenda Item Number Nine, we're going to skip over. Mr. Grant's staff's not here, but you do have the Treasurer's Data as part of your working papers. And if you have any additional questions, deal those to the Treasurer's Office. Agenda Item Number Ten, we'll have an update from Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. Mark, and I think you have someone with you.
Cheers.
Everybody knows Sarah. The chairman, members of the board, thank you. Allow us to give you a brief update on our activities in July. Our business development division, tomorrow we'll have a Quick Book Workshop. We have a special assembly in Richmond to have one-on-one meetings with a couple of folks that have interest in that accounting program. Valerie also, Valerie Harper's conducted six site visits in the last month, as you can see, who she's been visiting with and providing consultations. Those were two. Our marketing recruiting division, you have attached the monthly, kind of plumber report, it ticked up just a little bit, but it has been very consistent over the last year. We have a very full and workforce situation. Our community and companies continue to hire. We have submitted our annual workforce and tax credit on the CCAT facility. Cost of living information for Martin Luther County has been returned to the third board by 2023. And Spencer Johnson has met with both city and county Enterprise Zone coordinators for information, make sure that they can handle this, so they can respect the Enterprise Zone. And all of our information, demographic information, we have some updates. We, in tourism, as Sarah's divisions, staff's conducted 13 site visits and a phone consultation. We had eight phone calls over the month. Seven packets were requested, and there was a lot of distribution with 200 of our activity guides. You can see the business list that showed to deliver to. In talent development, Sarah has met with some interns at Eastman. She helped them understand more about our community and things that they can do to get involved while they're here. During the summer, we had our quarterly industrial roundtable meeting last week on the 11th, and it focused on that hospital. Spencer Thomas, the CEO of the hospital, came and gave a great presentation on services that are available there. Our pre-location guide has been updated and distributed for printing, and we have a copy of our 23 and report. And just some highlights there, you can read this if you please. But it has been a great year, another great year for us. The second page, a couple of highlights with the $22 million state grant that we decided to continue to develop the lot to Commonwealth Crossing and the accompanying funding agreement that was drawn in between the city and the county that eventually will bring some revenue to the DC to help us with our marketing. This will be down the road as Lot Two is developed, but it also enables Harper to bring $6 million in funding, matching money to our site grading effort there. And as Mr. Wagner said, and a quote we've had, it just really is a great example of cooperation that does go on quite a bit here that maybe not, people don't see or realize. Leon mentioned it, and it is a great team effort that we have with respect to economic development. Our tourism division had another great year, almost $67 million generated for the community, which you can see the decrease in the sales tax, the sales tax, not through tax. And what this means for every resident of Martinsville County is they pay $160 less in taxes every year due to the money generated through tourism. And that's a great thing for us. Mobile applets launched this year. You can see page views and downloads. It's been very successful. A lot of our tourism efforts are moving to social media and online types of efforts, and that's just a trend in the industry. All of ours are small. And business division generated almost $550 million in investment. We had 82 businesses on attended workshops that Valerie Harper put on for the year. So again, overall, it's been another really good year. Building blocks we put in place this year, we believe, will pay really strong dividends for the community in the years to come as we look forward to fulfilling that promise to bring Commonwealth Crossing online and look forward to opportunities it brings to the community. I'll be glad to answer your questions. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Just as you meet with the different local business folk as well as, you know, bringing in, you know, folk who are looking at Henry County as a possible location for their business, are there any kind of common themes or conversations that you're having that we need to be aware of, that we need to address to make our community, I guess, more appealing or the right place for these folk or better suited for some of the businesses that already exist? Are there any things that you're hearing from various people that's a common theme?
Well, most of the, well, there are. Well, most of the, well, there are a number of still are common themes, but our workforce is a great asset for us, particularly larger companies come because of that. As our economic development, or the traditional economic development, the manufacturing improvement has been successful. That has driven more of the smaller business and retail type development. As more hiring jobs come to the community, people have more spendable income, retail, and other type services follow that. So a lot of the things that Valley Harper's doing, are working with those companies that are coming in to provide service for companies that are here and people that are moving here. But workforce development's always good. Pro-business attitude, friendliness in the community are very high on everybody's list. Things we can all do, we talk about a lot here, that's community-wide, but we need to take more pride in our, where our community looks and beautification efforts, and need to quit throwing trash out. You know, that's not just a problem here, it's a problem everywhere, but the less, the more of that we can deal with and not have, the better our community's going to look with respect to other places. But overall, it's far more positives than negatives. People come here because they think they're a great opportunity, you have the outdoors, there's great lifestyle, quality of life, cost of business, business here is one of our strong assets. You can do industrial business here and a lot more favorable rates than you can in some other places. So all of that together helps us, but we need to always move forward. A lot's been done downtown to improve the looks there. Sarah and her staff are working in beautification areas and cleaning up, and always being aware of those site things. And that is the little things. It's not really the big things, it's sort of the smaller things that we tend to take for granted that sometimes can make the biggest difference. So those are the things we want to keep our power involved with respect to that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul. We will go back to Agenda Item Number Nine, a monthly report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grassstaff. Scott, welcome.
Thank you. Apologize for being late. This is a collection for the end of the month, June 30th. Personal property collection, we have collected 90.55% of the 22 personal property taxes during the month, we collected $113,721. Real estate, as of June 30th, we collected 95.07% of the 22 real estate taxes. We collected $97,300 during the month. So far, in 2023, taxes collected $529,549. And so far, in the month of July, we have 37 D M E stops collected. If you recall, we had a judicial sale on July 12th, sold 14 properties, I believe, and they all got a bid on everything, so the confirmation here with the judge will be September 21st.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Grassstaff at this stage. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 11, we'll take up numerous financial matters, beginning with 11A, an additional appropriation referencing regional planning grant match opioid abatement funds. Mr. Wagner.
Henry County Marshall recently awarded a grant of $20,000 from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority to study and identify community-based options for the most effective long-term use of the funds for opioid abatement. The city has agreed to serve as the fiscal agent for this project. Both localities are required to contribute a match of $10,000 toward the project. Staff is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $10,000 from Henry County's opioid abatement funds for the match. And with all use of county opioid abatement funds, they must be approved by the board.
Okay. The board has background material on this, as well as the explanation by Mr. Wagner. What is the desire of the board in regard to this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $10,000 from the county's opioid abatement funds for the required match.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0, Jennifer. 11B, an additional appropriation referencing Children's Services Act Program Funds. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $240,000 from various cost centers to cover overages in the Children's Services Act Program Fund. As you're well aware, the cost of providing services to certain at-risk youth continues to escalate, resulting in expenditures exceeding the budget amount. And I know you've heard me say this many times, that we have little option in these situations, that there are mandated services, we're required by the state to provide, but most time they come with no state money. Just kind of to show you the magnitude of the problem, in fiscal year 2022, we spent $3.7 million on these services. And fiscal year 23, we spent $4.6 million on this service, so a $900,000 increase in one year. So we will continue our lobbying efforts to the General Assembly to provide some relief for those unfunded mandates.
In regard to this appropriation, what is the action the board would like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the transfer appropriation of $240,000 to cover the overage in the Children's Services Act Program Fund.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0, Jennifer. 11C, an additional appropriation and award of contract referencing economic impact study for the Martinsville Southern Connector. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is asking the board to appropriate $95,000 in grant funds received from the Harper's Foundation for the purpose of conducting an economic impact study related to the Martinsville Southern Connector Road. Having sound economic data will help the region make the case for building the road. The Chambers Partnership for Economic Road, commonly known as CPAG, is serving as a conduit for the contract with a research firm called SIR. Thus, we're also asking the board to award a contract in the same amount to CPAG for these services.
In regard to this appropriation and awarding of the contract, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making motion to approve the additional appropriations of $95,000 and award a contract in the same amount to the Chamber Partnership of Economic Road, CPAG, for the purpose outlined above.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0, Jennifer. 11D, an additional appropriation referencing housing assessment planning grant for the Planning, Zoning, and Inspections Department. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $50,000 in grant funds received from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. The funds will be used to assess specific community needs related to housing and related infrastructure and develop a plan for addressing the identified needs.
In regard to this appropriation, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $50,000 grant received from the Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose of conducting a housing assessment.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0, Jennifer. 11E, an additional appropriation referencing United Way Planning Grant for the Planning, Zoning, and Inspections Department. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is asking the board to approve an appropriation of $10,000 from the Department of Housing and Community Development for the execution of a United Way Individual Development Account IDA Planning Grant. These funds provided an opportunity for the United Way of Martinsville and Henry County to offer free training to local residents on topics related to financial management. Essentially, the county just served as the fiscal agent for this grant for the United Way, and the funds should be appropriated back to the fiscal year 23 budget.
In regard to this appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the additional appropriation of $10,000 received from the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0, Jennifer. 11F, an award of contract referencing a generator relocation for the Building and Grounds Department. Mr. Wagner.
Staff is asking the board to approve a contract of $235,710 to Fidelity Power Systems for the relocation of the existing generator providing emergency power to our 911 center and other emergency equipment within the administration room. Prior to eventually demolishing the old jail, the emergency power network, including the generator, must be relocated to an area identified behind the administration room. And the price you have before you is based on a source well collaborative contract and has been authorized by our purchasing department. Funding for this project is included in the fiscal year 24 capital improvements plan, and Deputy County Administrator J.R. Powell has worked on this project quite a bit, so if you have any questions, I'll be first to ask.
In awarding of this contract, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award the contract of $235,710 to Fidelity Power Systems for the relocation of the emergency generator.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0, Jennifer. 11G, an additional appropriation referencing a return to locality funds for the Public Safety Department. Mr. Wagner.
Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is asking the board to appropriate $55,423 received from the Virginia Department of Health's return to locality funds. The return to locality funds are derived from a fee, each fee will register in Henry County, and is collected by the Commonwealth and then returned to locality. Authorize expenditures of the funds for items such as emergency medical services, training, supplies, and/or equipment. Currently, the funds are distributed equally between the volunteer rescue squads and the Department of Public Safety for those purposes. Consistent with the distribution model, the four volunteer EMS agencies are projected to receive $11,085 each, and the Public Safety Department will receive $11,084. And Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is here, should you have any additional questions?
In regard to this additional appropriation, what action would the board desire to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the additional appropriation of $55,423 received from the return to localities fund.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Excuse me. Is the Axton Rescue Squad, since they dissolved, is this the same?
So there is not a share allocated at Axton Place, they've accrued the same, the money that would have went out, Axton has split up among the other.
That's what I want to know.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor is 6-0, Jennifer. 11H, an additional appropriation referencing asset forfeiture funds for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Commonwealth Attorney Andrew Nestor is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $15,000 from state asset forfeiture funds to cover travel-related professional development expenses for his fiscal year 24.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $15,000 from the state asset forfeiture funds for travel-related expenses for FY '24.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0, Jennifer. 11I, consideration of a resolution referencing signature authority of the inmate fund for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Did you know there's been quite a few personnel changes at the sheriff's office? As a result, Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to approve a resolution to update the signature authority for the adult detention center inmate fund. The inmate fund comprises cash on inmates at the time of their arrest or contributions to them from their family members. These funds can only be used for the health and welfare of the specific county inmates, granting signature authority to specific sworn law enforcement personnel, or ensure the sheriff's office can effectively conduct day-to-day transactions related to the fund's purpose. And you have in your packet the proposed resolution, and I think we have present Major Eric Harrison here and Captain Tim Compton, should you have any questions?
Okay. In regard to the approving of the resolution to update the signature authority, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the resolution to update the signature authority for the inmate fund.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0, Jennifer. 11J, an additional appropriation referencing asset forfeiture funds for the sheriff's office. Mr. Wagner.
Let me correct something I just said. One of those personnel changes was the promotion of Major Eric Harrison to Lieutenant Colonel. Eric Harrison, so let me correct it. Item J, Sheriff Wayne Davis is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $7,200 from state asset forfeiture funds to cover the cost of sending two investigators to Cell Bright certification training. Cell Bright is a technology used for digital data extraction, analysis, and intelligence. And again, Lieutenant Colonel Harrison and Captain Compton is here, we have questions.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriations of $7,200 from the state asset forfeiture funds as required. As I said, excuse me.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0, Jennifer. 11K, an additional appropriation referencing Virginia Department of Education for the school board. Mr. Wagner.
The school board is asking the board supervisors to approve an additional appropriation to the fiscal year 23 budget in the amount of $219,679 received from the Virginia Department of Education. The additional revenue is the result of recalculations performed by the state using the actual average daily membership, commonly known as the school population totals for all school divisions. Henry County Public Schools' average daily membership was higher than the count used for the fiscal '23 budget, resulting in additional revenue from the Commonwealth. And we have with us today Superintendent Dr. Blake Lewis and Dr. Ben.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation to the fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $219,679 received from Virginia Department of Education.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0, Jennifer. 11L, budget amendment referencing revised estimates of state funding for the school board. Mr. Wagner.
You may recall when you looked at budgets, there was quite a bit of uncertainty on state funds available for schools and building operations. Now that we're into the fiscal year, the school board is asking the board supervisors to approve an amendment to the fiscal year 24 operating budget to reflect an estimated reduction in state funds of $1,666,062. The school board has presented a list of recommended fiscal year 24 budget amendments, which is included in your packet to reconcile the funding change. And again, the superintendent and Dr. Buett is here as well.
In regard to this budget amendment, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the amendments to the Henry County Public Schools' fiscal year 24 operating budget totaling $1,666,062.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to ask the question, how does this impact the school system moving forward for the school year?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you can see with the reductions in funds, we did have to reduce the amount for our facilities budget, so that was about $400,000. We also had to reduce the amount in our technology budget. We were able to, through planning around the end of the year, throughout the year, buy technology during this year to support us through next year, so we had to make some cuts in the technology budgets as well. There were some purchase service accounts that were cut also in the packet, so it didn't affect salaries. We hold true to the salaries for staff and the salary. We hold true to the salaries for staff and the safety for our students and staff, so in those categories, there were any cuts there.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Just hold there for just a moment, Dr. Boone. With that, any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor is six zero Jennifer. Dr. Boone, if, I was going to do this under comments, but since you're there, would you formally introduce to the board and to the community, on behalf of the board, our new superintendent and ask her to come forward?
Yes, sir. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, our new superintendent for Henry County Public Schools.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Adams. I appreciate this impromptu recognition by the board of supervisors today. I am enjoying getting to know the good people of Henry County, and I'm enjoying being able to come downstairs and be part of this function of our local government as well. And for those folks in the audience with us today, thank you for welcoming me to your community. And just to plug for our school system, I am going around the community and doing some community meetings, and so please be checking social media and some other outlets for that information. And I would welcome public participation at those events so that I can get to know everyone a little better and you all can get to know me as well. I would like to address your question, though, about the impact. So I do thank Mr. Diller for raising that question. Obviously, a blow to our budget of a little over one and a half million dollars is certainly going to impact negatively what we had hoped to do within the school division this year. And so I do hope that our continued partnership with our board of supervisors can help us in the event that we do run into any deficits due to that budget shortfall coming from the state level. So again, thank you so much for the time today. I appreciate that, and I look forward to a continued partnership with you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the community.
Thank you, Senator.
Agenda item number twelve, a consideration of a resolution and additional appropriation referencing the Southern Virginia Recreation Facilities Authority. Mr. Wagner.
The Board of Directors for the Southern Virginia Recreation Facilities Authority, which operates this Smith River Sports Complex, has submitted in letter both the city of Marston and Henry County requesting the dissolution of the authority and authorizing the transfer of all assets and operations to Henry County of the sports complex. It is noted in the letter from Scott Proven, Chairman of the Board, that their current model of funding for the Smith River Sports Complex is not sustainable. He also noted that inflation and limited access to top tier tournaments have restricted its ability to be profitable as a standalone organization. He also notes that the board believes that the continued operations of a premier facility can best be accomplished by the county. And I might add here as well that, being a member of their Board of Directors, there was considerable discussion to get to this point. You may recall the board asked for an increase in direct contribution from both the city and the county to keep the model as it was. Unfortunately, only a moderate amount of new revenue was generated through that request. The facility is still a premier facility. They're hosting top-tier soccer and frisbee and other tournaments, but it is the desire of the Board of Directors to keep it that way. And as mentioned, they feel that the county can do that better than have an authority that must depend on outside funds for its operations. To dissolve the Southern Virginia Recreation Facility Authority, both the city and the county must collectively agree to do that. The staff has prepared a resolution for your consideration on this matter, and the city is also to consider later at their meeting tonight. Just for point of reference, Sarah Hydges is here with us. She is also a board member of the Recreation Facilities Authority, and if you have questions, either of us can answer those questions. So if you concur with this request, staff recommends that the facility become part of the county's Parks and Recreation Department under the leadership and direction of Roger Adams. Additionally, the Harvest Foundation has provided a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to assist us with the costs associated with transitioning the complex to the county operations. If the board adopts the proposed resolution, staff asked that the board also appropriate and authorize the county administrator to move the funds to the appropriate line items for the purpose of operating the Smith River Sports Complex during the transition.
Okay. You've had this as part of your background material, and we actually have two separate motions that are possible considerations today, if it's the desire of the board. With that, yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Question. Mr. Wagner, do you know what the impact will be to Henry County once we take this over? An estimate?
So you may recall when the sports complex was created, the authority was created for the management operation. For many years, it was funded. Their funding was supplemented by the Harvest Foundation. That funding has no longer been available to the Board of Directors to use for operation. Much of their operation of the complex, we intend to say, we think will continue when the county takes over as well, such as sponsorship. Monogram Snack Foods is a major sponsor of the complex. There are sponsorships on all the fields, so we anticipate that revenue continuing to be a source to offset the cost of operating those funds. But in all frankness, the complex has been operating on a shoestring budget for about two years now, and ideally, that's not how we want to operate an organization that we put our name on. So I don't have a good number to tell you it's going to cost exactly this amount because we don't want to operate it, just like it's been operating for the last two years. However, I'm confident that the transitional money provided by the Harvest Foundation will give us the funds to make the transition, so we can present it to you in a budget form and for fiscal year twenty five, or fiscal year twenty five.
All right. And then you will?
I talked all around any questions, but?
No, I was just thinking of additional funding, maybe through tourism tax, occupancy tax.
You may recall in our budget message that I recommended you all to consider that as a funding mechanism to operate this facility, tourism-related activities related to this complex. And I, that is still on the agenda to happen in the future. We must coordinate a meeting with the hotel owners and operators before we can do that, but I plan to bring it to you before the end of the year, to consideration of changes to the tourism, the transit occupancy tax is the official name for it, so we can help offset some of the cost of operating the tourism-related activities at the sports complex.
Thank you.
If we approve more solar farms in the Irishwood District, we can use those funds to help offset that cost.
How about the impact on Roger and Parks and Recreation? I mean, I know he's about six inches underwater anyway, but?
And, you know, interesting, Roger is very enthusiastic about taking this over. As you know, he was, everything he does, he does with a lot of energy and passion, and he sees a tremendous opportunity for this to be the twenty eighth county park. He has high expectations for its success, and I think he can do it, so. He will be a different work and may be adding staff at some point in the future, once we figure that out, but Roger will certainly give us a good plan to go by.
The one thing I've found about Roger in the past is a high level of optimism as to what can be done, and I think it's well noted, without me even saying it, that you reach a low point because of sometimes outside obstacles that you have no control over. None of us had control over a non-travel, two-year period, that people just were not traveling and carrying tournaments to different places. But part of the optimism, and I think we've seen it as of late, is there is a keen interest in the hotel motel business in the general area. And with that, that brings an opportunity for places for teams to stay, and I think that we have seen something on the downside of the Henry County Recreation Center that was handed over to us, and Roger made it a bright spot. Mr. Diller, I think you had commented not in the meeting, but prior to me, that we want to do this first class, and I would expect that from Roger.
Let me add also, it's, sometimes we think about it being a tourism tool, and it is. We have people here from all over the country that come to play soccer and ultimate frisbee, college and universities come here to play those sports. But it also provides a valuable service here in our community, and it's over eight hundred children participating in rec league soccer at the sports complex over the past year. You know, that's a lot of children participating in that sport. It's used, you know, it has a playground there that promotes athleticism and building muscle and things like that, has walking trails, and it is, you know, an anchor to our Dick and Willie Trail that one day will expand all the way to Philmont Lake. It provides a lot of local service as well, in addition to the benefit of the tourism that comes.
Mr. Chairman, you know, when you're talking about Roger, you know, he's one of the harder-working persons that you ever seen. And in my mind, it's no doubt that, you know, the sports complex will want to grow because of his dedication, such as the fair has grown. You know, when he hits something, he hits it, there's no stop to him, you know what I'm saying? He either says, we do it big, we don't do it at all. And that's exactly what he said about the fair. You either do it big, we don't do it at all, and that's what he's going to hit that sports complex with.
Yeah. And let me also add, you know, the Board of Directors, Sarah being one of them, Scott Proven and others, they have also committed to making this transition successful. Many of them have been on the board for years. Many of them have coached soccer and had children go through the soccer. They have a lot of passion to see that facility succeed. In addition, there's a whole group of individuals called the Friends of the Complex. They're, you know, also ready to step up and continue to be successful.
For your consideration, you have two possible motions, and it will be to take them one at a time. What is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the resolution dissolving the Southern Virginia Recreational Facility Authority and directing staff to take steps necessary to make it part of the county's Parks and Recreation Department.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero Jennifer. Likewise, another motion in regard to an appropriation for the board's consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the appropriation of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and authorize the county administrator to move the funds into the new appropriate line items for the purpose of operating Smith River Sports Complex.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero Jennifer. Agenda item thirteen, a consideration of commitment statements referencing the Blue Ridge Soil and Water Conservation District for Public Safety. Mr. Wagner.
The Blue Ridge Soil and Water Conservation District plans to request funds for the Natural Resource Conservation Services to address needed spillway capacity of drains for two earthing dams located in Henry County, specifically those known as Leatherwood Two A and Leatherwood Number Three. Many of you know this, but not a lot of the public knows that there are eight earthing dams in Henry County, one concrete dam that was built specifically for flood control in our communities. Many of them you don't even see from the roadways. So these are two dams that DC Soil and Water Conservation is asking for federal funds to make improvements to those dams so they continue to provide adequate flood control in our communities. You may recall, we did something very similar, some of you may recall, a few years ago, we made significant improvements to the Marybone Dam in Virginia. So we make that request to deny to approve this letter of statement to apply for the grant funds to make renovations to these dams. As Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is here, should you have any specific questions?
All right. Thank you. With that, what is the desire of the board as far as approval of the commitment statements?
Do you know what they're plan, are they just going to widen the spillways?
That's the gist of it, is to approve and widen the spillway of both sites.
Like they did one on my place before. Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the commitment statements from the Blue Ridge Soil and Water Conservation District for improvements to the Leatherwood Two A and Number Three dams.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero Jennifer. That takes us to agenda item fourteen, informational items. I will begin by taking any comments for the board, beginning with Mr. Z.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Diller.
Yes, sir. You know, we've talked tonight about several things, and I've jotted down some things that, you know, very optimistic, some great things going on around us. You know, Dale, you know, new county administrator, we met our new school superintendent, we have a new sheriff, we have elections coming up, and there are a lot of folk who are running for various positions, which means a lot of folk are going to get out and vote. A lot of people are taking part in, you know, our local government. The sportsplex, you know, very excited about that because, you know, I'm a believer that, you know, with change, I like to use the word adjustments, there's always opportunity, possibilities. Met with Brad Kinkema today, and the YMCA that he's looking to build is going to be, you know, magnificent, and, you know, renovation of the Mustangs Field, so just a lot of great things going on, and I want us to just catch the wave. I want us to be a part of that optimism. I want us to continue to do the things that bring the optimism and the excitement throughout Henry County and not miss those opportunities. So as, you know, each of us, you know, are out and about, let's look at things that we can do to make sure that, you know, we continue to inspire, motivate, and, you know, get our folk moving forward and get our county moving forward, because this is a great time for Henry County, and all of these things coming together at once may not happen again for years, so let's make sure we take advantage of that and just catch the wave.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
No, sir.
Mr. Buchanan?
No, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
And I don't have anything additional items.
You may have noticed in your packet, we now include a report from our Engineering and Marketing Department, and I plan to include this on a regular basis in your packet to help keep you and anyone interested in our progress at CCBC and other projects managed by our Engineering Department. Just a reminder, National Night Out, a national event to bring law enforcement to communities is scheduled for Tuesday, August first, from five to eight p.m. at Compassion Church on Irisburg Road. Our premier county event for parks and recreation, the fifteenth annual Smith River Fest, is scheduled for Saturday, August nineteenth, from ten a.m. until four p.m. at the Smith River Sports Complex. This, as mentioned, is a county's signature event that celebrates all things associated with the Smith River and our great outdoors, and the nice thing is admission and parking are free. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman.
All right. With that, takes us to agenda item fifteen. If someone will cite the items that allow us to go into closed meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board go into closed meeting under two point two thirty seven eleven A one for discussion of appointees to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board, the Community Policy and Management Team, and the Roanoke River Basin Association. Two point two thirty seven eleven A seven for discussion of pending legal matters. Two point two thirty seven eleven A three for discussion of acquisition disposal of real estate, and two point two thirty seven eleven A five for discussion of as yet unannounced industries.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor is six zero Jennifer. I'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. We have a closed meeting on a motion by Mr. Slaughter, second by Mr. Z. Mr. Powell, will you pull the board, please?
Yes, sir. Board members, at best of your knowledge, all the public business matters lawfully presented from open meeting requirements under the Code of Virginia section two thousand two thousand thirty seven eleven will heard, discussed, and considered in closed meetings. How do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Diller?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Z, I believe that you have an appointment for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move the board appoint Danada Worrell to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board for a
Library Board for a four-year term, I believe, that expires on June 30th, 2027.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Bryant, I believe also you have a committee-wide formal for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir, I sure do. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Stephanie Turner, excuse me, I'm sorry, Jonathan Martin, to the Community Policy and Management Team for a length of two years, expiration date's going to be 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. And likewise, Ms. Buchanan.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board reappoint Michael Ward to the Roanoke River Basin Association for a one-year term, expiring August 31st, 2024.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Wagner, before we recess, do you have any items of business for the board's consideration?
I do.
Board members, do you have any? We will stand in recess and start promptly at our 6 p.m. We'll call the 6 p.m. session of the July 25th, 2023, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to board for my recess of earlier this afternoon. I'd like to welcome all of the visitors, remind you, if you want to address the board specifically on any of our regular meeting agendas, you must contact the county administrator's office at least seven days advance of any of our meetings can be placed on the agenda. However, the public may address the board under the agenda items, matters presented by the public that will take up later in the meeting tonight as agenda item number twenty-one. Again, welcome everyone. We will begin with agenda item sixteen tonight, general highway matters. We have Lisa Hughes from Vida. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Some things we have going on around the county, we've got a lot of ditching and shoulder work, and we started mowing our secondary roads this past month, so we'll be getting around the county in a couple of weeks, hopefully, then start on our primary roads. We're paving on Stanley Town School Road, and well, after that, we've got a portion of Red Creek Drive due and Rockwood Park left. Eighty-seven and fifty-seven are our primary roads that will get paved, they'll be later in the summer. One of our big project, our big paint project is on 57A. If you've seen, we've got message boards out on the bypass, but 57A, 682, is closed between Stanley Town Health Care Facility and Bassett High School. Now, this is a pretty complicated job, we've got sewer lines and water lines, and it's a three, pretty good-sized pipe, and we anticipate it taking between four and six weeks to complete, and I know that may overlap the first day of school. We hope not, but we've been planning for the worst, and I've talked to Keith Scott with Henry County Schools and let him know that, but I'll keep him posted on how that does. That's pretty much what we've got going on right now, busy, busy time of year.
Will that help alleviate some of the spontaneous flooding when we have excessive rain in that area?
Yes, yes, sir, it will.
I have a question, Lisa's still on your radar to add to your list, the ingress into the Henry County Administration Building, Turning Lane?
Yes.
You still have that?
We've, we've got several of those projects on the list, and as we can get to them, we will plan to do that.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have any question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seventeen, we'll conduct a public hearing referencing the budget amendment appropriating grant funds for the site work at Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. Mr. Wagner.
Henry County was recently awarded a grant of $22,237,705 from Virginia Economic Government Partnership Site Readiness Program, and a grant of $6 million from the Harley Foundation. Both grants will be used to fund the site work on Lot Two of Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. Since the total exceeds 1% of the total county budget, the board must hold a public hearing before appropriating the funds. Following the public hearing, staff request that the board appropriate the funds totaling $28,237,705 for site work at CCBC.
I'll open the public hearing for this item to take input at 6:04 p.m. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on this item in this public hearing? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:05. Action desired by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $28,237,705 to assist with the site work on Lot Two at the Commonwealth Crossing Business Center.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item eighteen, a public hearing, rezoning application R-23-10, Homestead Mulch and More LLC, Zachary S. Hawkes. We have with us our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark, Mr. Clark.
Okay, this property is located in the southeast corner of Virginia Avenue and Berryhill Lane to the Red Creek District, tax grant number 16540 Lot A. The applicant here's requested the rezoning of 2.36 acres from suburban residential district to commercial district B1, and the applicant wishes to locate his commercial landscaping sales establishment on this property. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommend approval of this request.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at 6:06. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:06. Mr. Slaughter, I believe this is in your district?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item nineteen, public hearing, Henry County Comprehensive Plan Revision. Mr. Clark.
Okay, a little background information here that you all are probably familiar with, that it's meeting on May 23rd, 2023, the Board of Supervisors passed a motion requesting the planning commission to start the process to amend the county zoning ordinance to limit the total amount of acres in Henry County that could be permitted for solar panel locations. Specifically, the board was interested in capping the total acreage possible at 1% of the total landmass area of Henry County. Henry County has approximately 382 square miles of landmass. If implemented, a 1% cap would limit the total acreage allowed for solar coverage at 2,445 acres. Currently, Henry County has ten approved solar projects spanning approximately 1,807 acres of solar coverage. To date, one project has been completed and is already generating electricity, and another is currently under construction today. The process of amending the zoning ordinance begins by amending the county's comprehensive plan to incorporate the long-range vision for renewable energy in Henry County. This includes guidance in the areas of objectives and then strategies to reach those objectives. Attached, you will find the planning commission's recommendation for an amendment to the comprehensive plan. This language was discussed by the planning commission on June 14th, 2023, and a public hearing was held on July 12th, 2023 to receive public input. The Board of Supervisors also must hold a public hearing on the topic prior to making changes to the comprehensive plan. Public hearing has been properly advertised for this meeting. You have attached the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and the public hearing notice for that. Following a public hearing, the planning commission recommended the adoption of the proposed amendment effective immediately.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:09. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I have a brief statement to read as you come forward. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you, and by coming to the podium, you've exhibited, you, you have agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board, the staff, and its members. You will see the same level of consideration from the board, and please state your name and the district you live in, please.
My name is Tim Thompson. I live in Ashland on Mountain Valley Road, and I am in favor of Henry County revisiting and amending the comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan is currently antique and doesn't reflect changes in the modern world, and, and certainly doesn't look forward to the, what the future is going to hold for all of us, regardless of what we actually want here. So it's important to do that. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Others desiring to speak?
Mr. Adams, I have some things I'd like to say.
I'm taking input from the public.
Yes, sir.
And I'll be right with you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, I will close the public hearing at 6:10. Mr. Dill, you indicated you'd like to comment.
And this is, we're talking about the 1% correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Clark. What would be the financial impact? You know, we have the 2.5 in a five-mile radius. What would be the financial impact if we add the 1% on top of that?
I can give you that answer in the number of acres that it would affect.
I'd like to know the financial impact, you know, being that solar, you know, from my perspective is also part of economic development, so what, what would the county stand to lose if we add this 1% on top of that 2.5? Is that something where we're losing, say, a million dollars or potentially a million, 20 million, 30 million? Because I think that's important for us to know as we make a decision that impacts our finances.
Okay, well, let me give you, that's way outside of my bailiwick as to the taxes that are paid for solar projects. That's the role both of the, the county tax assessors and of course, the commissioner of revenue.
Let me, let me ask you this question. Do you think that's something that we should get information on before we make a vote, so we will know not just the 1%, but we will know the financial impact of a decision like this?
Well, I may throw this back to the board then. One of your jobs is adopting a siting agreement, which very much affects the overall revenue for the county that would be realized from solar projects. And in that regard, the difference in 1% versus the 2.5% are several thousand acres, and you've got a diagram in your working papers, you're in the lower right-hand corner that shows the difference between what a 1% coverage area looks like and what a 2.5% acreage coverage looks like. And it's a significant difference in acreage. The amount of taxes that are paid on that is not the planning department's role. Tax rate, of course, set by Board Supervisors, the assessments were done by the county assessors, so I really can't speak to the difference.
So, so in essence, if we vote tonight, we don't know how much money will potentially cost in the county?
No, your vote is a land-use decision, it's not a financial decision.
Well, financial from the standpoint of if we reduce the land that can be used for solar, then we're reducing the amount of funds that the county can make off of solar, so therefore it becomes a financial decision as well.
In theory.
In reality, yeah.
Just as we're adjusting this tonight, if we decide that we made a mistake, we can always come back and adjust it again. Just because we're doing this now doesn't mean anything is set in stone. If the public opinion changes over the course of the next year, this can be changed to allow more acreage, less acreage.
And I think the public opinion is that, at least for the Iriswood District, is that we would like solar, but I, you know, for me, I think it's important to know those kinds of things before making a decision, so that we don't get, you know, into that same type of deal we got into with the, you know, sales tax, and then you have to come back and change things. So I think those kinds of numbers are important, so that we know, you know, the whole gamut of what we're voting on, the whole impact of what we're voting on.
Yeah, I understand your concern.
Yes, sir.
I'm just not the one to be able to answer that question for you.
And Mr. Clark was not directed to do that.
Correct.
He received a directive to approach the planning commission without changing the ordinance to change this.
Correct, but, but I do think that as a group, that's information that we should be able to provide to us as we make a decision like this, because we're voting on something, and it impacts, you know, our whole county, and, you know, as I was, between sessions, I was looking at some numbers, you know, we compare Henry County, Pennsylvania County, Halifax, and I look at, you know, the poverty rate, Henry County's poverty rate is about 20%, Halifax 14.5%, Franklin 15%, Pennsylvania County 16%. You know, so when we begin comparing us to those other counties and the decisions that they're making, they're somewhat in a better financial situation than we are. Our median income is 38,000, Franklin County's median income is 49,000, Pennsylvania County's is 49,000, Patrick County's 46,000, Halifax is 43,000. So when you start looking at numbers like that, you know, do we really make the same decisions that those counties make, because we're not in the same place that those counties are when it comes to finances, and I think those things are important in making a decision like this, because it does financially impact not just the county, but individual citizens and what they can profit off of a business opportunity, but, and I did just want to make sure, got that information out there, wanted to have that conversation, so that as we vote, you know, we, we, yes, we can go back and unvote or revote, but it would be nice to have that information before we vote, so that we know what impact we're having on our county, since we are, you know, put in charge and trusted to make the decisions that is in the best interest of our county.
Okay, we've gone through the public hearing process, and is there a motion that anyone would like to offer for the board's consideration?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adopt an amendment to the Henry County Comprehensive Plan as presented, effective immediately.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, and, you know, last thing I'd like to say is, you know, we did get our salary study, we know that 82% of our folk are below that midpoint, you know, we heard the school system mention that the state cut them out of a million dollars, you know, we've got the $240,000, $240,000 for the child services program, and, you know, some other things that we need funding for, and I just, you know, I'd like to know where is that funding going to come from if we don't, you know, take an opportunity like solar, you know, do we have other industrial projects, other economic development projects that can immediately bring those funds in? Because I don't think the folk who are paid below median income, you know, really want to wait five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years to get brought up, you know, to par. So I think that's another question that we have to ask ourselves, are we okay continuing to pay 82% of our folk below median income?
Other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Oppose? It's five one, Jennifer. Agenda item number 20, we'll conduct a public hearing for the proposed Henry County zoning ordinance amendment. Mr. Clark.
Okay, attached, you will find the planning commission's recommendation for an amendment to the Henry County zoning ordinance. This language was discussed by the planning commission on June 14th, 2023, and a public hearing was held on July 12th, 2023 to receive public input. The Board of Supervisors must also hold a public hearing on the topic prior to making changes to the ordinance. Public hearing has been properly advertised for this meeting. You'll find attached in your working papers, the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to section 21-224K, and also the public hearing notice. Following the public hearing, the planning commission recommends the adoption of the proposed amendment effective immediately.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this proposed Henry County zoning ordinance amendment at 6:19 p.m. Is there anyone desiring? Is there anyone desiring to address the board in this public hearing? Anyone? Seeing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:19. Is there any action that the board desires to take at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the amendment to the Henry County zoning ordinance as presented, effective immediately.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's five one, Jennifer. Agenda item number 21, Matters Presented by the Public. Is there anyone wishing to address the board under Matters Presented by the Public? Anyone? Okay, seeing and hearing no indication, takes us to agenda item number 22. If someone would make a motion?
I'm ready.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor is six zero Jennifer. Everyone have a good evening.